Good evening. Tonight, we are having the Design Review Commission regular meeting, and I am calling the meeting to order at 6:32. Our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Commissioner Lopez, will you lead us? Thank you.
All right, please. Our Pledge of Allegiance, certified by the United States of America. Mr. President, we're welcome. Always respect, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Chair Romo.
Here.
Vice Chair Salo.
Maybe running a little bit late.
Commissioner Tu.
It's absent.
Commissioner Cheng.
Present.
And Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on cable channel three and on our online platforms. To prevent any overlaps in comments, each Commissioner will be called upon to speak. Item number one, public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the Design Review Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Persuading to the Brown Act, the Design Review Commission cannot answer any questions or take any actions until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. If you wish to address the Design Review Commission, please fill out a speaker card that is available at the back table. Once completed, kindly submit the card to our recording secretary. Speakers will be called to the podium one by one. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. Do we have any public comment cards?
Chair, we did not receive any.
Great, thank you. And we have our Vice Chair Salo here now. Welcome. Item number two, consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar are considered routine and recommendations, will be approved in one motion unless a member of the Design Review Commission or public requests a separate discussion. Commissioner Chen, do you have any, anything to take out?
No, I do not.
Commissioner Lopez?
I do not, no.
Vice Chair Salo.
No, I do not.
Okay. I actually have one item on the, on the minutes from our last meeting, our special meeting in May, on the 27th, on page nine. This is, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. The eighth paragraph from the top. My comment was supposed to reflect that the applicant should be respectful of the staff's time, not the...
So noted, Chair.
Thank you. With that revision, I'd like to request for a motion to approve the consent calendar as revised.
Aye, so move.
Second?
I second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Chair Romo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Salo.
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Cheng.
Yes.
And Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Vote is four to zero, motion passed.
Thank you. Next, we have our public hearing, and Sam will take it over from here.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Design Review Commission. There is one public hearing item this evening, and copies of the agenda and the staff report for this meeting are available on the city's website at www.sangabrilcity.com and also on the table that is by the entrance. If any member of the public wishes to speak on an item this evening and are not the project applicant, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to the recording secretary. And speaker cards are available on the back table as well. Please write down the item number that you would like to speak on, and speakers will be called up one by one. As mentioned, each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. For the item this evening, staff will provide a summary of the staff report, followed by comments from the applicant, then the public hearing will be open, and after public comments, the applicant is provided the opportunity to respond to comments if they choose, and prior to the close of the public hearing, the commission may ask questions of the applicant's staff or the city architect. And once the public hearing is closed, the opportunity for public comment has ended. And at this time, Madam Chair's staff is ready to provide a summary of item A.
Thank you very much. Item A is 905 through 909 South Charlotte Avenue, planning case number PPD 22-007, precise plan of design, and the applicant is Eric Tsang. Marlon?
Do we have the clicker available? Good evening, Chair Romo and members of the Design Review Commission. The public hearing item before you tonight is for precise plan of design to allow for an eight-unit condominium development located at 905 through 909 South Charlotte Avenue, planning case PPD 22-007. Excuse me, it doesn't seem to be working. That works. Okay. Hmm. Hmm. There we go. Is that, that's this, okay. The project site is located at the west side of South Charlotte Avenue, between East Grand Avenue to the north and East Mission Road to the south. The project site is comprised of two parcels, both of which are Zone R3 for multiple-family residents. The subject property measures a total of 15,000, excuse me, the subject properties combined measure a total of 15,000 square feet and are currently developed with a single-family residence on each lot. Next slide, please. The subject properties are neighbored by R3-zone properties in all directions. Next slide, please. The proposed project is for the construction of four new buildings housing a total of eight condominium units. Each of the eight units will feature one of two predetermined floor plans, all of which will be three stories in height with private roof decks. Each of the eight units will measure between 1,311 square feet and 1,861 square feet and have ground floor garages with capacities, capacity for two cars. In addition to the garage spaces for residents, the development will also provide four guest parking spaces. Next slide, please. The proposed project has been reviewed for compliance with the San Gabriel Municipal Code Development Standards for the R3-zone and meets all of the requirements, including density, lot coverage, building height, setbacks, and open space. Next slide, please. The project is designed in a contemporary style of architecture similar to other multifamily developments approved throughout San Gabriel. Staff and the city architect have reviewed the proposed design and have found it to be consistent with the city's residential design guidelines. The project and landscaping designs will be considered, oh, excuse me. Each of the four buildings will be clad in a textured stucco painted in a variety of neutral colors. The buildings will also feature horizontal wood slats, vertical wood siding, and vertical sheet metal to serve as accent materials and provide visual articulation. Each of the units will have individual access to private rooftop decks. Each deck will feature guardrails made of aluminum and glass. The design of the project is subject to review, was subject to review by the city's planning commission for the subdivision of the eight condominium units. The proposed project will feature new landscaping incorporated throughout the property. The front yard area will incorporate two 36-inch box white crape myrtle trees, two 24-inch box Chinese fringe trees, and a variety of shrub and ground cover, including rosemary, flax lily, dwarf blue chopsticks, and coropia. The remaining areas of the project site not occupied by driveways, walkways, and guest parking spaces will also be fully landscaped and include six 36-inch box Saratoga Bay laurels, four 36-inch box Western redbud trees, and additional ground covers and shrubs. The side and rear yard area along the west and south property boundaries will feature new five-foot-wide planter areas to create a buffer between the adjacent properties. The private rooftop decks will also feature landscape planters and a Saratoga Bay laurel tree for each of the decks. The general plan, oh, excuse me, next slide, please. The general plan land use designation for the subject lot is high-density residential. This land use designation allows multifamily residential development in areas Zone R3. Additionally, the proposed development meets the housing goals 2.1 and 2.2, as well as community design goals 10.1 and 10.4 of the City of San Gabriel general plan. Next slide, please. The project was reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. This project is exempt from the requirements of CEQA per guideline section 15332, class 32 for infill development, as it meets all of these criteria, including that the project would result, would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic noise, air quality, and water quality. Technical studies evaluating the potential for each of those impacts were prepared by Kim Lee Horn. Both of these, based on the studies provided, the city and associated consultants concluded that the proposed project meets the conditions for a class 32 exemption. Next slide, please. The item was noticed at the project site, advertised in the June 12, 2025 edition of the San Gabriel Sun, and a notice was sent to all property owners and tenants within a 300-foot radius. Tonight's agenda was also posted at City Hall, the post office, and the public library. Next slide, please. With that, staff recommends that the Design Review Commission adopt a resolution of the Design Review Commission of the City of San Gabriel, California, approving pla, pla, excuse me, planning case number PPD 22-007 for a proposed eight-unit condominium development at 905 through 909 South Charlotte Avenue, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. It is now time for the commissioners to ask any clarifying questions from staff. I'll start to my right. Commissioner Chen, do you have any questions for staff?
No, I do not. It looks clear to me, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez, do you have any questions for staff?
I do not, thank you.
Vice Chair Salo, any questions for staff?
No questions for staff, thank you.
I don't have any questions either. At this time, it is time to announce public comment, time for public comment. Do we have any members of the public or anyone who has submitted comments?
Chair, we did not receive any.
All right. And I think the architect is here, correct?
Yes.
Would you like to say anything? Yes.
Good evening. Hi, good evening. My name is Kaizen Chen. I am your honor, chair, commissioners, and city staff. Hi. I'm with Eric Chen, the architect, and I'm here to represent the applicant and the owners, the beloved owners here for the eight-unit condominium proposed for 905, 909 South Charlotte Avenue. Our vision is to transform two underutilized R3 parcels into a modern, much-needed ownership housing to San Gabriel. This project will introduce eight duplex-style townhomes, each with a private two-car garage and a roof deck. The building mass steps back 15 feet at grade and a further 18 to 21 feet on the upper floors, softening its presence along Charlotte Avenue. Exterior finishes of white and charcoal stucco, as you see on the material board, bronze windows, graphite wood slate accents, and also standing seam metal wall siding create a warm contemporary palette. Material samples and color are shown on the material board being passed around tonight. Since receiving the staff report, we have made three key refinements. Number one, we, we enhance the pedestrian experience by adding 42-inch wide colored concrete walkways and clear wayfinding signs that guide residents to the rear units. Number two, we replace standard paving with 1,790 square feet of permeable pavers, covering 42% of all paved surfaces. Number three, we improved rooftop comfort by relocating photovoltaic panels and planting eight 36-inch box Saratoga Bay laurels on the roof terraces, providing shade without increasing building height. And number four, these changes do not alter the project's density or setbacks. A certified arborist inventory confirms that all existing trees on the site are ornamentals, fruit trees, or palms, none of which are protected under the city's ordinance. We will remove 42 unprotected trees that conflict with building paths or the required fire lane. To compensate, we will plant 20 new canopy trees, five Chinese fringe trees along Charlotte Avenue, and 15 Saratoga Bay laurels distributed on site and on the roof decks, exceeding the code requirements by 33%, providing a larger overall canopy than existing it's today. The landscape palette is entirely drought tolerant, achieving an ETAF of 0.19, which is 65% below allowable water budget. Permeable pavers, linear bio swells, and a weather-based irrigation controller will capture and treat storm water on site before going off to the streets. Every garage will be pre-wired for electric vehicle charging stations. Our design fits comfortably within the neighborhood context. Upper-floor recesses and varied parapet heights ranging from 27 to 31 feet break the mass into townhome, townhouse scaled volumes. Along Charlotte Avenue, a low three-foot garden wall, two new street trees, and individual unit entries create an active yet respectful frontage while preserving clear sightlines. So in summary, this proposal exceeds tree replacement, open space, and water efficiency standards, incorporates every staff recommendation without altering density or setbacks, and delivers a sustainable, context-sensitive new housing options for San Gabriel. We respectfully request the Design Review Board's approval. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate you having a very comprehensive, prepared comment for us to listen to. It helps us understand the project. Commissioner Cheng, do you have any questions?
Just a couple of verifications, please step forward. On your siding, it appears to me that from the rendering, the upper floors has horizontal siding. And then the lower floors, you have the vertical siding, both on the wood and on the metal. Is it, is that truly your intent? Because your, your color board and your paper, it says vertical siding on the plan, but it appears to be horizontal. Can you clarify what is the final design like?
So the orientations of the sidings creates a different massing. If it's horizontal, it has more situated of that mass versus vertical with more height. So that scale of the complexity of depending on the material can really enhance the look of the building. Now, Commissioner, to, to your opinion, which one would you prefer?
What appears that your, your rendering shows the horizontal siding that will kind of give you a more expanded look on top, which I appreciate. And then in the lower floor, on the first floor, you show it vertical because of the limited height, a vertical siding appears to be appropriate. So I just want to verify that that is your design intent, and I, I can accept the way that you show it on your rendering, so that once we approve that, you're going to implement that as such, so that there is no conflicting information. I don't want the contractor to look at it vertical and then to end up doing all the vertical on top, whereas your, your rendering shows horizontal.
Yeah, please.
Maybe it just should say vertical and horizontal siding, that would clarify it.
That would make sense. Your plan, your plan on A 5.0 clearly state that those are vertical sidings.
I see. I believe there might be a typo.
Right, those, I just want to make sure that there is no misunderstanding, having a typo for the contractor to implement it incorrectly.
Yes, thank you for that feedback on this.
Because you do apply them horizontally and vertically from the rendering elevation, and it shows vertical in the bottom, first floor, horizontal on the upper third floor. So I just want to clarify that that is your intent and that is what it is.
That is the intent, and you do point out a good fact that when it's a lower height, being vertical on the bottom would actually kind of give you that visual, making it taller of the building. And then when the, the building's too, too tall on the top, the horizontal actually kind of flattens down the massing as well, yes.
I, that was, I thought that was your intent in the design.
It is, it is. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
No questions or comments, thank you.
Vice Chair Salo?
Yeah, I just want to confirm, the building height is 27 foot six, and the parapet is 36. So the total height to the top of the parapet is 31 feet? That's correct?
So the parapet height is actually made of glass. So when you see through it, the massing structure is actually at the 30-feet height. So the railing is actually just for safety precaution. So when it's transparent, I'm not sure if there is a standard that allows when it's transparent, you don't count that extra three feet?
That, that's fine. I'm not saying that the building is 31 feet high. I just want to confirm that I'm understanding correctly.
Yes.
The building is 27 six, and then the parapet, the glass parapet, is 3 foot six.
Correct.
So to the top of the parapet is 31 feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And the glass parapet, you said railing, but I don't think there is a rail, horizontal railing at the top of that parapet.
We could put that in as part of the building plan check stage.
No, I'm not requesting it. I'm just confirming that that's not the case.
It's not the case.
Okay.
Correct.
So the top edge of the glass is just glass? There's no metal frame, or there's no edge there?
I don't think there is a specific detail provided yet. Let me see if there is one.
No, I didn't find one.
Yeah, so we can further enhance that during building plan check.
Okay, um, yeah, I don't have an issue with it just being glass. Actually, I prefer that, but I just want to confirm that that's the design intent.
Yeah, that is the design intent, yes.
Last thing is that I think in between the glass panels, there's like a small gap, I would assume, because you have a metal clip holding the glass on either side. I've seen this detail before where exactly where that gap occurs, water drips down the front facade, and you can kind of see it exactly, like you see the gap and then you see like a line of water, and then it, it kind of becomes part of the aesthetic of the building. So I would just say, you know, be sure to detail that coping at the roof so that the water goes back onto the roof and then into your drainage system.
Yes, we can look into that, but I believe in the material board, there is that one detail where it shows how the glass is being situated on a base. That base is elevated for the, the glass to be hung on top, and, and so there is no part of it that's touching the coping. So there is a gap between the coping and where the material supports.
Okay, so that, that horizontal surface that the glass is sitting on, I think, you know, you have a choice to have it sit exactly flat, or it can kind of cant outward.
Oh, yes, yes.
Back inward. And I think just aesthetically, it would be better if it canted inward so that the water will drip onto the roof and then into your roof drains.
So on sheet A 7.0, if you may, there is a detail where it's canted inwards in the detail.
A 7.0?
Yes.
Which drawing?
On the details 16, 16, sorry. It's a TPO, single ply roofing. It has a show, a parapet. That part will actually can't inwards in the detail. Sheet 7.0.
I see, I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just a matter of providing an extra detail of how it.
How the glass sits on it.
Connects to the, yeah, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Those are all my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
So if you look at detail nine on the same sheet, it, it shows that coping to be flat. So they probably should match as Commissioner Salo has described.
Yes. That would be additional detail that we will look further into during building plan check stage.
No further questions, thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to verify that the units on the southern part, southernmost, so the 909 units, those units on the southern end have the stairway that will, will be on the side where the two single, where the, it's a single-family home. On the north of the project, it's a two-story multifamily building. And south of the project, there are two single-family homes. So the stairways on the, that's side of the project are on the southernmost. Can you verify that for me?
Are you, which unit are you referring to? H or G?
So it's all the units on that side.
On that side. Are you concerned of?
So it would be E, F, G, and H. When you're looking at one-story.
Right.
Residential, and you have a three-story building next door, and then the equivalent of a fourth story with the rooftop garden. The stairways, if they're on this southern part, you actually, it's kind of a little setback, so you don't have someone looking directly down. It's away, and I just want to verify that, because I think, as commissioners, this is a neighborhood that will probably go through some transition because of the zoning, and we do have to have some respect for what's there right now, and there are some single-family homes there right now. So unit H, G, F, and E, I just want to verify that that stairway is on the southern side of the property.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
They are, yes.
All right, thank you.
And on the elevation, it shows a blank wall there, so there's no actual windows opening for any visibilities.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
That's important.
Yeah. It limits the amount of opening there, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I, I appreciate that your packet has been complete.
Thank you.
And comprehensive.
Yeah. I believe it shows it on L2 sheet. You don't, you might not see it there. Maybe it has been changed from the presentation. It shows it on L2 sheet. There are some stairs on the south end.
Yeah, I just want to verify for the record, because if someone's looking at.
Right.
Listening to this and they live, there's a privacy issue.
And there's a buffer between the stair and, yeah, and the living area. And there's a buffer between the stair and, yeah, and the living area.
Yeah, and since I have you here, I do want to compliment your team. I'm been asking for landscape plans and landscaping and amenities when people offer rooftop garden opportunities, and this project actually shows how that would all work and provides amenity, including planters and, yeah, planting material, irrigation, and all those things make it easier for that area to be used, but.
Well, indeed, we exceeded by thirty-two percent too, so.
So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Before I turn it over to close public comment, I just want to hear from our architect. Do we, do you have any comments on this project?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've had the opportunity to review this eight times, and I think they've satisfied all of my concerns.
Thank you.
Um, and once again, I'm going to ask if there's any comments from the general public.
Chair, we did not receive any.
All right, thank you. So it is now 7:03, and the time for public comment is now closed, and it's time for our deliberation amongst our commissioners. So I'm going to start to my right here. Commissioner Chen?
Thank you, Chair. The project seems to be a, a well-designed project, and it met all the requirement. So based on our further discussion and clarification, I can approve the project incorporating our discussion items. So I can do that later when you're ready for motion.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lopez?
I, I like the project, and I like the fact that the rendering is very close to what is actually in the plans. It, it, it limits and it facilitates the approval of these projects, and I, I like it, and I thank, I commend you, and I'm ready to move.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Salo?
Yeah, the, this project, this proposal is consistent with many projects we've approved in the past, so I'm prepared to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'd just like to reiterate, you know, not only Commissioner Lopez's comment, but it's nice that we have a project as complete, and there's balance, there's rhythm. It's a little larger, but you have thought about privacy issues and putting that staircase, yeah, working with the windows on that south side, and it makes a difference, and hopefully it will definitely improve the area. I personally like that the trees, you, as you stated, you're removing fruit trees and you're planting non-fruit trees. So the fruit trees can, by code, can be removed at any time. That's something that a lot of people don't realize, but you're adding to our urban canopy, and that's, that's important. I'd also like to mention that I appreciate that this is an area that doesn't have sidewalk on it, but you are providing a paved area and what would be the parkway, because there's no sidewalk there, you have some landscaping, lower landscaping on that private, I mean, on that public area, that public line. So I, I appreciate that. So it looks kind of seem, it welcomes you into the project, so I just want to make a comment on that. I think we've said a lot of nice things about your project, so at this point, if there's a motion, we can move forward with.
I, I'd like to move to approve planning case number PPD 22-007, precise plan of design on 905 to 909 South Charlotte Avenue, per staff recommendation, and also the clarification of what there was discussed during this meeting on a few items. I think staff has recorded that, so that would be my motion.
Thank you very much.
I second.
Thank you.
Before I call for the question, just wanted to see, do the staff need us to itemize the things we talked about today?
No, staff has all the notes.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Chen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Salo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
And Chair Romo.
Yes.
Vote is four to zero. Motion passed.
Congratulations. So at this time, comments from our planning manager?
No comments, Madam Chair.
Okay. Then we go to item number five, commissioner comments and conference slash meeting reports. This is a time where each commissioner may address the commission on public matters of general information and/or concern. This is also a time for the commissioners to report on conferences or meetings they have attended. Commissioner Chen?
Uh, no, I do not. I don't have any additional information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
I'm none, thank you.
Vice Chair Salo?
Nothing to report.
Okay.
I, I'm just, I just have something really quick. I read an article that said that porches are coming back as an architectural feature on homes. So I've been a proponent on, on porches, and some architects here in the U.S. also agree, so I'm looking forward to seeing porches.
I can attest that Ron points out when there's, that when a house is lacking a porch, so.
Yeah.
Because, you know, the applicants tend to want to maximize the, the property with everything, and so they, they lose the porch. And so one suggestion I made some time ago is maybe we give them incentive that they can have another half percent of FAR or something like that to put a porch on.
Yes, I, I think that would be great. It really knits community together, and when you're looking at trick-or-treating or, you know, something where people knock on your door, neighbors, you know, people going door-to-door campaigning for a local candidate, all of that makes a difference. And so I, I look forward to seeing porches in the future. So if there's anything that can be done to incentivize it, that would be nice, and it also provides kind of that shade relief for the front of the house as well, because you do have that overhang structure.
It helps fit into the neighborhood because many houses in San Gabriel have porches.
Yes, 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 yes.
Ron, doesn't, I could be mistaken, but I was under the impression that the porch can extend beyond the setback at the front yard.
No, that, that's one of the incentives that I would like to recommend.
Really? Okay, thank you for clarifying.
And I, is that a code issue, or can that just be done through administration without counsel?
It's a code issue, but you know, and, and again, it could be a percentage, you know, you're not, you're not going to do the whole thing, but a, a little bit of encroachment, I think, would be a good thing.
It's also included in the floor area ratio calculation as well.
Yeah.
I guess if it's fully covered, then it become part of the building. If it's, let's say, partially covered, the, let's say, half the porch is covered and half is exposed with no roof on top, or even with a awning, then, then that can be not counting as the setback requirement. It would be like a outdoor patio in the front. But, but they are very personal, very nice. It's, it's got the relationship with the occupant, and it's something, it's good to look into and see if we can improve the design quality, having a more inviting approach to the residents. Sure.
So let us know how we can support you in getting that done. All right. Okay, so with that, I'd like to adjourn this meeting to our next regular meeting of the Design Review Commission on Monday, July 28, 2025, at 6:30 PM here at City Hall, 425 South Bishop Drive, second floor, City Council chambers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.